All right, well, we're back in session here. Doug, if you're ready, I can open it up for the road pro- budget and program.
Yes, um, the Iowa code states that on or before April fifteenth of each year, the board supervisors with the assistance of the county engineer shall adopt and submit to the department for approval, the county's secondary road budget for the next fiscal year. And then it goes on to state what is required in it. So to make a, just so everyone is clear, this budget was completed yesterday. It does not have any information that was talked about this morning. But we will have to make some changes after we discuss this a little bit. So the first thing to talk about is road department budget. Uh, this was all what we talked about earlier with our budget and reference reflects those numbers. And this is the revenue. Uh, we begin our balance, what we think is a balance at the end of this fiscal year with one million sixteen thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, receipts from property taxes uh would be two million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Now, we, the maximum that we can tax on the, all the property in the county is sixteen and seven-eighths cents. And the maximum that we can tax on the rule, anything outside of the cities and towns is three dollars and three-eighths cents. Uh, if you use the sixteen and seven-eighths cents per thousand and dollar sixty-one um per thousand on rule, we end up with that two million fifty-seven eight twenty-six. When we're all said and done, we need to make sure that we get that number correct. Local option sales tax, going to be getting a million dollars of local option sales tax. Road, regular road use tax is estimated at six million three hundred nineteen thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh, the amount for the uh farm market extensions that the county will receive for maintaining the roads in towns that are less than five hundred populations, fifty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Time twenty-one, which was uh some legislation probably about ten years ago now uh that uh increased some registration fees, uh will be receiving seven hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars. And then we got some miscellaneous drainage district repair, thirty thousand. Driveway construction, we assume we're gonna be getting about seventy-five thousand dollars. Fuel sold to, sold to other offices in Cassup County, uh hundred thousand dollars. Gravel pits for rent, twenty-eight thousand. Other miscellaneous, fifty-five thousand five hundred. And then uh another miscellaneous, thirty thousand. That's actually, uh, I'm looking, I think that we'll be able to sell a couple of trucks, dump trucks, and that would be fifteen thousand dollars apiece, what that thirty thousand makes. So in total of all the miscellaneous receipts is three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred. The total of all the receipts or the revenue that we have to work with is eleven million five hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Now, if you look at the uh, the expenses, uh engineering administration, the total in administration and engineering is seven hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars. Total roadway maintenance is four million eight hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred fifty dollars. And total general roadway is three million seven hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, again, total expenditures of eleven million three hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars. And that would leave a balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-five of one hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, that balance is too low. I will be watching expenditures awfully close and not spending any money on anything that the road department does not need to try and get a balance. I have a feeling that we're gonna have some money that is not spent in this budget um that will have, have some, uh, our balance will actually be higher to begin with, but we still have to maintain a balance that are a larger balance, and I'd like to be over two million dollars, to be honest with you. So that is the budget. Now we'll go through the fiscal year, five-year program. Let's see here, I gotta use your hands, too. So for the accomplishment year of twenty twenty-five, uh, we begin, we have a federally funded uh resurfacing job. This would be down by Irvington, going from Highway one sixty-nine east to P thirty, excuse me, P sixty, the Laverne Sexton Road. Um, we have one point nine million dollars of farm and market funds and federal aid funds for that project. Then we have a farm and market uh resurfacing job on B sixty-three that uh, that would be from the Laverne Sexton Road over to the east county line, one million dollars of farm and market. And then if we do have some extra funds available, um, like to resurface P thirty. Depending on the funding, we may have to shorten up that project. The Irvington Road was last resurfaced in year two thousand. Down there, that Galbirth Road was two thousand four, and this road was resurfaced in the year two thousand. So these roads do, do uh need some attention. Out of the three roads, the southern portion of this road is in the best condition. So we concentrate on the north end. Then we have a, the bridge project using incremental funds, uh, that'd be one million dollars approximately of incremental funds. That's at Michelson Marsh, and we have some problems with the substructure there. And then we have a bridge north of Sexton, uh, this, the last inspection, the inspectors found some problems with the foundations on that, so we would like to get that replaced. The Michelson Marsh Bridge was built in nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, this bridge here was built in nineteen forty-seven. So again, we have some problems with the substructure there. Um, so that's all the bridges that we have in fiscal year twenty-five. Moving on to first priority year fiscal year twenty twenty-six, start off with A forty-two, this is a federally funded job. Uh, they, the Bancroft Forest City Road from uh, it would be US one sixty-nine over east to P sixty-four. That was resurfaced in two thousand three. And then we have uh R fourteen north of A forty-two to Highway nine. That was last resurfaced in two thousand one. We had two million dollars estimated. We'd use farm and market on that. And then this is uh three miles from A forty-two to B fourteen on R fourteen. Uh, we would use local funds on this. This was last resurfaced two thousand two. And estimated there that that is five hundred fifty thousand dollars uh to, to resurface that three-mile stretch.
Doug, for R fourteen with the holes and stuff that are in it now, are we planning on doing any patching or repairs currently?
We will do some slurry leveling on R fourteen. That's what our plan is for that. And then this job here, this is a mile of pavement north of B fourteen. Uh, it's on the county line. This was last resurfaced in the year two thousand. Uh, this is a road I question if it needs to be resurfaced or not, uh, whether it should just be turned back to gravel road. It does run up north, and then if you go east, there is a church. And I can only make an assumption that at some time Hancock County and Cassup County uh felt it necessary for that church. Uh, this, I have been talking with Hancock County. We've budgeted, uh, programmed a hundred thousand dollars for that. A hundred thousand dollars would also come from Hancock County, uh, but that's something to discuss.
Hancock County, do you, do you know what they want?
I just talked with the county engineer. I have not asked him to give the uh opinion, uh, ask, ask his ward's opinion.
Mile that goes nowhere.
It ends and then turns into gravel, yes. Then we have the bridge right around the corner from Michelson Marsh. This is a bridge that was built in nineteen sixty-five. Planning on using federal aid and farm and market funds to uh construct, replace that bridge. Again, a lot of timber down there below, holding up the bridge. Uh, this is posted for um one legal vehicle at a time on that. Uh, this is a bridge north of Lone Rock that's underneath the pavement. This would be replaced with a box culvert. This was put in in nineteen seventy-one. If you look close, we do have a structure underneath there just to keep the culvert from collapsing. That's been there since uh, I believe we did that in the late nineteen eighties, maybe early nineties. So it's been there thirty years. Then we move on to feder- uh fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, resurfacing. This is getting back up north, uh finish up A sixteen. Uh, this was last resurfaced in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, planning on using one point two-five million dollars of farm and market funds for that. We have P sixty-six north of Highway nine. That uh, one point two-five million of farm and market funds, that was resurfaced in nineteen ninety-nine as well. And then we got a s- short pavement up north of Ledyard, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand, three-mile stretch of local. And that was resurfaced in nineteen ninety-nine as well. Then we have the bridge right on the north side of the Union Slough Outlet. Uh, this would be using local funds. Uh, we have four hundred thousand dollars in there. I think that's probably a little low. It's probably more like a three-quarters of a million, but this would be local funds to uh take that and replace that. That was built in nineteen sixty-four. And you can see some of the substructure problems. Uh, they had problems, they drove some piling underneath there to keep the uh back from washing through, and we have issues with that bridge. And then this is that bridge, uh, forty-seven oh five eighty. This was built, uh reconstructed in nineteen eighty-six. This is going over a drainage ditch. It's on a gravel road. This is one of those that uh, with the Cassup Wind Energy Project, uh money that was given to the county uh with their road use agreement, uh, we had planned on replacing. Uh, estimate that this is about five hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace it. Uh, the bad thing about this is we've already had the one in, one uh issue that took out uh the, this is on the north side of the bridge, water runs south. Uh, we had ice take those piling out. We had to go back in and re-support that cap up there. You can still see the pile, but that had failed, and that had failed. If we get another ice storm, I have a feeling that uh more piling would be taken out on that. So kind of an issue that uh we are watching, and we do have it in the program right now. Our third priority year fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, uh, start off with resurfacing projects. This is by the transfer station, F M P forty-four. Uh, this would be farm and market funds, a one million one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, then we'd also be resurfacing from Highway seventeen, B thirty, from Highway seventeen to one sixty-nine. That'd be two point one million dollars of farm and market funds. These projects were, last time they were resurfaced was two thousand three on both of those. And then we have the mile in between them, we could be using local funds on that. The one and a half mile from uh Smith Lake, Highway one sixty-nine east, and that's three hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds. Uh, we have a bridge up to the east of um Ledyard that uh was constructed in nineteen fifty-one. We'd be using federal funds to replace that bridge on A thirty. It's a stout bridge. It's got good sub, substructure. We got some problems with the uh deck on that. So uh, we are seeing the life of that is getting towards the near, getting toward, the end of it is getting near. And then we got a bridge, it really just needs a bridge deck overlay. We've had this in our program for quite a few years. Uh, this bridge was built in nineteen sixty-seven. And it's good structure, however, you can see where the rebar, transverse rebar there is starting to show, reflect through. Uh, we would get a deck overlay on that, get good cover on it, and hopefully uh keep it's life. This is on a gravel road as well.
Uh, Doug, uh, what's the difference with the one by Ledyard that you, side sixty versus the one there? Like, if the substructure's good on the one by Ledyard, is that something where we could do a?
Well, the one by Ledyard was a superstructure. If you look at that, the spalling underneath there, this, you can see where the concrete is actually spalling in between the beams. So it's a superstructure there, and this was built in, this one was built in nineteen fifty-one, so it's going on seventy years old. The bridge with the deck overlay was built in sixty-seven. I think it's something that we gotta, when we get to it, we gotta say which is a better way to spend the money. Do we spend it uh and replace the bridge, or do we spend it and uh put a, put so much money into the top and only have a certain amount of life on it? So it is in our, our twenty twenty-eight uh year, so it's a ways away. And then there's a small culvert on a gravel road. This is a, a group of uh whoever the drain, take, take care of the drain, they went clean this out. Uh, this is a round steel culvert. Uh, again, it's uh supported underneath there with some structure to make sure it doesn't fail. But we really need to get this replaced, and this might be one that if we have some extra money uh in our maintenance budget, we would buy a pipe and hire a contractor to replace that, so. And then the last fiscal year, uh, got a federally funded project. It'd be P thirty-south, I call it, from Lone Rock, B nineteen up to A forty-two. One million dollars of federal funds I'm hoping that we can get. And then there's the north part of that, um, one million dollars from A forty-two to Sway City, Highway nine. Uh, this would be federal funds and farm and market funds that would uh build that project. We do have plans to do some maintenance on that previous stretch there. And uh depending on how everything turns out, how the life, how that works, uh, I have a lot of projects in the last fiscal year. Uh, so we, I know that we would never be able to construct them all in one fiscal year, but we may be able to move some back or move some forward depending on funding. And then we got B fourteen, that'd be running from Highway one sixty-nine over to Titanca, P sixty, I think that's P sixty-six over there, one point nine million dollars of uh, of farm and market funds. Uh, the projects that are uh through Lone Rock, Sway City, and this project were all resurfaced in that, two thousand one. Then we got a project on the south side of uh Type, east side of Type. This is a three-mile stretch. It's between B nineteen and B fourteen, uh, five hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds on that project. Uh, if you go further south, uh, that road ends up turning into a gravel road as well, down by Bruce Ganses. And then we got B sixteen, that's a three-mile stretch. This one is actually eligible for TIF funding. If it is still, we would have enough money available. But I got five hundred fifty thousand dollars for that three-mile stretch and using increment financing funding. And then B fourteen from Titanca East over to R fourteen, uh getting that, and that's three miles of local funding, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. In those projects, two thousand two, two thousand three, and two thousand one was when they were resurfaced. And then we got a river bridge on P sixteen right north of A forty-two. Uh, that bridge was constructed in nineteen seventy-three, but its life is starting to really show. Um, we could possibly do some work on abutment piling there. I have no idea what it would cost. Give us some extra life on that, but again, looking at the bridge, it's already uh fifty years old. Depending on what that cost is and how much life it would give us, a decision that we have to make. And then there's seventy-seven thirty-four oh five. This is down by Bruce Ganses. Uh, this is a bridge that was built in nineteen sixty-five. Planned on programming seven hundred fifty thousand. I, this is one of those that it's borderline of whether a bridge or whether a box culvert um would work there. Just if you go a mile to the west, we're building a bridge over that right now. Box culvert did not work. And I know that when this fills, uh, it runs, it runs. So I think a br- a bridge would be more appropriate. And then uh the last structure in our program is a Pony Trust Bridge clear up north uh between section seven and twelve Springfield Township. This is an old, uh, it's a stout uh trust bridge. It's a fracture critical. If one of those members would be taken out, the bridge would fall. It, it just uh, there's no redundancy in structure at all there. Uh, this one, given the location of it, it's right on the half-mile. If we could vacate the road, in my mind, that would be the best solution. Take the bridge out, vacate the road, let the people access from the north on this side, and that let the people access on the south on this side. I believe ownership, different owners own the different quarters right there. Uh, however, that may be difficult. It has been difficult in the past on those situations. But uh, if we were to replace it, we would be using, I got an R C B reinforced concrete box, but we'd probably just put in a, a metal pipe there, using that. But that bridge was reconstructed in nineteen sixty-four, according to our records.
Good. I think there's only, is it only another mile of ditch there to the west?
Yes, it just starts away, just starts right to the west. But you can see, this is uh the foundation that that trust is on. Uh, we do have some spalling, some cracking. It's on timber. We've got some problems with the timber pile. But uh, I, I have reduced our, the number of projects in our program uh in fiscal year. The current pro- the current year that we have, we had fifty, we had fifty-two projects in our five-year program. I've reduced that down to thirty-one projects. And local money, um, we had eleven million dollars of local money. We have about six million dollars of local money in our five-year program. So obviously, by not doing any construction on, on uh gravel roads, there will be a savings. However, that first gra- that first bridge that fails on a gravel road, I would anticipate that the people will be in, the people that use it will be in asking for that bridge to be replaced. So estimated receipts, uh, right now, road use tax is thirty-nine point nine percent of our estimated receipts, property tax seventeen point nine percent, miscellaneous receipts nine point eight. Our beginning balance is eight point eight percent, and local option sales tax is eight point seven. Our estimated expenditures, uh, engineering administration is six point seven percent of the expenditures. Construction is seventeen point four percent of the, the estimated expenditures. Roadway maintenance is forty-two percent, and general roadway expenditures are thirty-two point eight. The total receipts, the total expenditures, both eleven thousand five hundred twenty-one, a thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars. If we remove the ending balance and just look at it, uh, administration of what's spent, those expenditures are eleven million three hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Engineering and administration is six point eight, roadway maintenance forty-two point five, general roadway is thirty-three point two, and construction seventeen point six. Uh, with an ending balance so small, it uh, the percentages stayed pretty much the same. If we add in our federal aid projects and farm and market projects and the uh, and the incremental financing, that would add three point eight million dollars to the expenditures or fifteen million two hundred thirty thousand six hundred fifteen total uh dollars spent. And if you look at that, engineering administration is five percent, construction is thirty-one point eight, general roadway is twenty-four point eight, and construction is thirty-eight point four uh percent of expenditures. And with that, if there's any questions, anyone would like, uh, I can try to answer those.
What are some of the differences between general roadway and roadway maintenance, or what?
General roadway is equipment operations, shop operations, new equipment, tools, real estate, uh, roadway maintenance, bridges and culverts, roads, snow and ice control, traffic control, road clearing. It's okay. Go ahead, turn on the lights here.
Thanks for that presentation, Doug.
Sure, I got a few more things I'd just like to bring up. Here is a financial statement and a road balance as of the end of March. So there's for March, the financial statement through March. Tammy alluded to it. There's seventy-five percent through the uh, the budget right now. And then here is road balance, uh, a road balance sheet. So if you look at that financial statement, you can see that we, everything is, everything within, is within the budget. One thing that, if you see something in red, that means what we're spent, for example, bridges and culverts, we had budgeted one hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in that, we've actually expended two hundred fifty-five thousand, so we are over. However, you look at the sub, the seventy-one hundred of that, we've spent seventy point seven nine of that portion of that budget. We have three-quarters of a million dollars obligated in new equipment, we have two hundred sixty-two thousand in roads, seven-eleven, that's gravel crushing. And we have, right now, obligated in construction, one million seven hundred ninety-three thousand, which is five hundred sixty thousand dollars over what we have budgeted. However, that construction is not all going to happen in this fiscal year. So I am confident of that. But as far as the financial statement, everything is good in the road department, as far as running under our budget right now. If you look at our balance sheet, we started out March, well, let's just go all the way up, the beginning of this fiscal year, the beginning of this fiscal year, we started with a balance of six million three hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. At the end of March, the auditor's balance was five million five hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. So we've used that balance in order to operate, that difference in that balance, eight hundred thousand dollars or so. We just received transfers. I think that not giving any kind of emergency, any kind of a situation where we need to spend a lot of money on roads, we'll be fine. And I believe that the road fund balance will probably end with about a two, two-and-a-half million dollar budget, not with one point one million that I alluded to in my budget presentation.
The hundred and thirty thousand or whatever.
That's the ending balance for 2025, the beginning balance of 2025.
Yeah, yeah.
Ways to reduce expenses, we've talked about that. And right now, I am going to, we're not going to be mowing it, or we're not going to be hiring any seasonal employees. And I hope the board, if you receive phone calls, will, will answer that our budget is, we're just not able to do that for. And then edgelines, I will get ahold of our traffic marking people, and we'll make sure that that does not happen. So you're going to be in our budget, you're going to be taking two hundred thousand dollars of general fund, is that what you're going to be taking, or what are you reducing?
Well, I guess we need to talk about where that's coming out of, and, I mean, I touched on it before, the million dollars we added in transfers this year isn't sustainable, so we either need to address that partially now, or it's going to come back even harder next year. Because we won't have a fund balance in rural to carry it over again.
So I am, I'm planning on reducing expenditures in this budget. I'll be taking a hundred thousand dollars away from traffic control and a hundred thousand dollars off of roads in roadway maintenance.
And I think to that point, that covers what we talked about before, but that still doesn't solve the bigger elephant in the room we've got, so.
Just a question, is were you taking it out of general basic, or are you taking it out of rural basic?
So I'll be taking, here's roads, we'll be reducing that a hundred thousand dollars, and traffic control's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Now, this is the revenue, and somehow, I would assume, you're going to also reduce revenue.
Yeah.
So where, where's that going to be coming from? Is that going to come out of the rural services, or is that going to come out of the general services, or general supplemental? General supplemental's gonna, I gotta go and redo everybody's
Health insurance.
Health insurance and give those figures to Tammy.
Yeah.
So that's going to be reduced, but that does not show up in this, this budget.
I would say probably rural, and if we can move deputies back to general, we could do that on the flip side, to balance the general and rural funds like we did before.
Take two deputies out.
I mean, we could, we could split that out, however it works to balance the numbers. But yeah, I would reduce the transfers out of, out of rural for Doug's budget.
Well, that makes more sense, because then you feed the supplemental back to the rural one.
Yeah, yeah. But I guess.
I don't know how many deputies you want, but you'll have to let me know.
We'll have to look at numbers. If it's two hundred thousand, it'd probably be two, I would say, but. But I guess, big question I got is, are we gonna do any more changes for the budget? Because the million dollars we added in taxes will come and get us next year. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. We could raise rural taxes thirty thousand dollars, and we raise the transfers a million, so it's not going to work next year. Yeah, but I'm open to listening to other ideas first.
Your service industry is all, people are your expense.
I guess, Doug, I'll ask this question. I know you had made the comment last week that our staffing was built around snow removal for winter, wintertime operations. If we were able to hire part-time help in the winter to help move snow, what would we need for full-time employees? If they were coupled with part-time in the winter, what would we need for full-time during the summer?
You're going to need thirty employees to move snow the way it's done right now. Whether twenty-six of them are full-time or four are part-time, whether twenty of them are full-time and ten are part-time. However, our experience with part-time employees, they're harder on equipment, they don't do the maintenance on equipment, they may get stuck more often. How dependable are they? You have those consequences to come up with, too. I don't know if we could, I don't know if we could even find that, that many part-time people. When we do our exit interviews, to be honest with you, most road employees, when you ask them the least, what they like the least about the job is snow removal. They didn't know, they, they did not like, double meaning, the uncertainty of what time they needed to get to work is one of the least favorite things that they have. It helps, we try, we try to do the best we can to let guys know what time we're going to start in the morning, but when the snow is forecasted, and it's supposed to start at midnight, there's only one way to figure out if you've got to go move snow or not, you've got to go out on the roads.
Yeah.
I think, Cassid County does not have a problem with dollars spent per mile road. We have good roads, we have some of the best roads in the state, yet it's one of the lowest dollars per mile that there is. There's only one county that does better.
Maybe we need to spend time with the neighboring board supervisors that don't seem to be having budget problems, but they'll help them see what, see what they're doing differently than we are. They will have to take some lessons from one or two other counties. As they pay their deputies more, they got, send up the road employees, it sounds like, they got half the, half the acres or miles to acres to, you know, to collect taxes on. So how are they doing?
I mean, if you just look, this, this, here, this is based on numbers yesterday. Our rural valuation, one billion three hundred thirty-five million dollars, our general of one million seven hundred twenty-three thousand, one billion seven hundred twenty-three million. So the road department would receive rural, one million seven hundred sixty-seven thousand twenty dollars, which you can go down and see, over the years, we were over two million, and then we went down to one million nine, now we're down to one million seven. General, we're up to two hundred ninety thousand dollars. And you can see that's grown throughout the years. We've always had that same levy rate. And this year, we threw in the cost of the health insurance for general supplemental. So our total property taxes were right around three million dollars. Rural levy, going to the road department, this is just going to the road department, dollars thirty-two. Going down to two thousand, I got two thousand three there, two sixty-five.
And then local option sales tax on top of that.
No, it wasn't.
No.
But people, I mean, if you want to, which, the sixteen and seven, eight cents, and then the fifty-seven cents for general supplemental is what that, nine hundred, nine hundred eighty-two thousand is. So the rural value changed three point four nine percent, general value two point two. The rural levy for roads went down sixteen percent, negative ten percent, or excuse me, that was a levy rate of dollars, went down ten percent. And it went up, this is in percentage, twenty thousands for general. And then if you look at your dollars, here's what the changes are. Collecting rural, less a hundred forty-five thousand, general up six thousand. Total property tax dollars, last year, the road department had almost two hundred thousand dollars less dollars that people paid towards the road department. Previous years, it's been gradual, some tens of thousands, some single thousands. This year, it's eight hundred forty-three. Now, if you look at some property tax examples, and again, this is using numbers prior to what is talking about, but if you look at a hundred sixty-acre farm with its assessed value, total property tax is four thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Total property tax is going to the road department, four hundred thirty-seven dollars thirty-two Twenty-nine, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it was four hundred three dollars. You can see the three hundred fifty, three hundred ninety, four hundred, four hundred. Now you look at a place, a house in Abona, and Tammy will be talking about this also. But it's, with that general basic, they're going to be going up and paying towards secondary roads, instead of ten dollars, which was last year, they're going to be paying forty-two twelve. Now let's look at some concentrated animal feeding operations. Total property tax is paid to the secondary road for a building, a site that has three buildings, seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents. That doesn't even pay for the rock that is in the truck, property tax. If you've got four buildings on it, it's got a hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. If you've got an agricultural dwelling, it's going up from a hundred thirty-two to a hundred eighty-seven. These are my estimated figures. And a rural residential, it's going up from two hundred four dollars to two twenty-seven. This is to the road department. This isn't every, all the county taxes or anything. People want the roads, they want all the services, they don't want anything cut back. if you look at a bridge that was built ten years ago by Marion Bridge Construction, an eighty-foot by thirty-foot bridge, it costs a hundred fifteen dollars a square foot, a hundred sixteen dollars a square foot. Bridge that's being built right now down by George Gunter's, a hundred ninety dollars per square foot, four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars compared to two hundred seventy-eight. This bridge was built in 2017. Go back a little bit further, 2014, and you've got a hundred dollars per square foot on an eighty-foot bridge. Total cost was two hundred fifty thousand, it's doubled from 2014 to 2024. Resurfacing, right now, cost per inch, per mile, about seventy-eight, eighty-nine, right around eighty thousand dollars per inch, per mile. So if you put three, three inches on a road, that's quarter million dollars a mile. We're only doing two inches this year to try and stretch things out. But we go back to 2014, forty thousand. This was a milling job I had on there, there's another forty, fifty. So our prices are going up. So people want, people want everything, they don't necessarily want to pay for everything.
Tax the other guy, don't tax me.
The only fair tax, the only fair tax is the one I don't pay.
I guess we can, we can look at spreadsheets and comparisons all day, but at the end of the day, we can't raise taxes on rural, a million dollars with the legislation that's in place. It's not an option. So what are we doing?
Well, the only thing, the only thing you can do is cut services.
Well, that's, that's my point here, is we've got a million dollars increase in transfers that is not going to be sustainable either this year or next year. We can make it through this year with the numbers that are plugged in, not going to be great position, but at some point in time, a decision's going to have to be made, and...
You can't expect employees not to have raises and pay more on their health insurance and their healthcare cycle.
Well, that's, that's my point. We can't kick the can down the road forever, it just makes it harder the next time we deal with it.
We take more projects off the board, if a bridge goes We take more projects off the board. If a bridge goes bad, you block it out and you close the road for a couple of years until you, until you get money to replace it. Or you eliminate ten people. And, uh, and you don't get roads plowed for two, three days. Four days until you, until they get a chance to get it on a hit. You do fly tops and you grab the roads going. If they wanna get out quicker, I guess they gotta take their own, just like I used to do. I used to take the smoke bowl around a little path down the middle gravel road down, down Highway seventeen so I could get out. About it. That thing is only, there's only two things. You've got services and you've got personnel. We're gonna do a combination of both. They don't have much choice.
Well, I guess at the end of the day, the question is, are we going to do anything with this budget to make changes so next year's easier? Or are we gonna have the elephant in the room hit us next year all at once?
When you talk about this budget, what budget are you talking about?
The, the budget we are planning for, for fiscal.
The road department budget or the county budget?
Road department.
So you're gonna balance everything on the road department again?
I said the transfers were increased, a million dollars. We can't sustain that. That's the simple.
Okay, so then, I, again, I would ask the board, what expenditures do you want eliminated?
That's what I'm asking the board.
I, okay, I would give there's fourteen, I'll give you fourteen situations that we can reduce expenses with. Reduce roadside mowing, I think that's been taken care of. Reduce edge lines, that's been taken care of. We can paint center line on a third of the county per year. That's twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per year savings. We can eliminate overtime for the road department. Fifty to sixty thousand dollars will be, uh, would be saved. No construction on gravel roads. I think that's about a million dollars a year, taking it out. We've already done that. But, again, when the bridge gets posted or the, a manure hauler goes over that bridge, what is, what's gonna be, that's when the rubber meets the road. Are you, are you gonna close the road?
Close that road till you get, for a year or two, till you make a name.
So, and that happens, especially with those timber structures.
Yep.
The, it's, it's happened to us before. I'll, I'll tell you that. We can remove all intakes from the road driveway so we don't have to go back and maintain them. We can create more level B roads. I'll give you a list of roads that we can make level B. Make minimal weight maintenance, no snow removal. We can create more, no snow removal roads. We can vacate roads. Cassup County, we can start charging for permits. Whenever somebody comes in, they wanna permit for a driveway, we can charge twenty dollars. They want a permit for a tile crossing, charge them twenty bucks. People aren't gonna like that either. Uh, we can charge for more, get more realistic in the construction of driveways and drainage district repairs. Um, if we do that, there's a possibility that more people will just start doing it on themselves and they won't even come and check, check with us to make sure.
Or they have contractors do, do all the repairs to the title, to the road department.
Charge for road damage and repair. That's gonna be dependent on cooperation from law enforcement and county attorney. We can do less maintenance on pavements. However, that's just gonna create a shorter life for the roads. Less expense, uh, right away, we're gonna see less expense, but you're gonna see more expense in the future. We could do less work for other departments. For example, a transfer station. The road department helps out the transfer station a lot, even by covering when they go on vacation or if they're sick. Uh, the road engineer's office, we do a lot of work. What's that gonna do if we don't cover the transfer station? Try and get another employee up the transfer station. So then we have to start raising our tipping fees. So, you know, there's fourteen. And we can save money. Now, some of those are not gonna be popular.
Does the secondary road get reimbursed? Does the secondary road fund get reimbursed for employees that go to the transfer station?
No.
Probably should.
Well, then we're gonna have to redo the transfer station budget.
Well, if they're providing hours of labor there, that entity should be paying for it.
They don't, they don't charge the road department when we bring in garbage from the, from the road either. So if we start doing that, then we'll have to start paying for the garbage that goes over the scale when, when we have that in the road. I, I mean, at all.
Yeah.
You, you can't solve one problem by, it's just putting the burden of payment on another, on another government entity.
You're only gonna fix the things that need absolute fixing. A bridge that's close to failing or a road that's got so many holes that you can't drive over. And, uh, or you're gonna, you're gonna get rid of ten employees and, and you're gonna let, uh, in the winter time, you'll do, you do the fly tops and the gravel roads, you get plowed maybe three, four days after the storm comes. So, if somebody wants to get out, they're gonna that's when you can sit, that's when you can, you can come in and tell you, say, well, here's the option. You came in bitched at us because you didn't want your taxes going up five, six dollars an acre. Now you, now you come in and bitch, you bitch your road ain't get plowed. Which one do you want? Tell me which one do I want. She will do it. We'll hire the people to get it plowed the day after the storm, which, you know, it might, it might cost, it might cost you six, six, seven dollars and maybe more in taxes. Can't have it both ways. You can't. It just, it's not a magic wand. You can't have, can't have it both ways. You can't come in here and say, don't raise my taxes, we'll raise Devonale's taxes. So, first thing you do is you cut out all construction that you, unless it's absolutely necessary. And then you fix it. You wanna fix the things that are absolutely need, need to be fixed. And then if you go and you get down that road, then you have to start everything looking maybe, you know, cutting the workforce down two, three, four, five.
Well, maybe that's something to look at for a hiring freeze if we have employees that retire or leave. Maybe we replace them with part-time positions for snow removal in the winter rather than full-time.
Part of, uh, being a secondary road employee, you are in a pool of drivers, for commercial vehicles, uh, safety sensitive driver. If you're in the pool and your name gets pulled and you're not present, it does create some problems for our administrator, who is the office manager of the secondary road department. I would prefer not to have, I mean, there's training that's involved. There's familiarity with equipment. And I don't feel part-time, uh, I, I feel there would be a challenge finding good part-time employees to help us out.
I'd say that, it's maybe like, you know, if there's a million dollars that has to be pulled out next year, then I guess the, yeah, it's, it's budget here. And that's when you look at what, what projects are you gonna pull out. Basically, you got two projects pulled out and that's a million dollars. Or a combination. Somebody, that's the road department, you know, first. Two projects of five hundred thousand pieces, you get your, you know, you get your money back. And we're looking at the year for now, things might look different. It'll look a lot different from me and Roger.
Yeah, I guess we'll have two, two other opinions.
They'll come in and sit out there.
There you go. Join Gaylord and the Gala.
Got any other thoughts, Roger?
Well, here. In the end, you can fact books, budget, and you just postpone fixing things. That isn't really feasible because we're, we're barely keeping up the way it is with the bridges and culverts.
I don't, I don't think construction is a place to cut.
Time where you have to, you might have to. Well, I think the, you know, close the road for a couple of years.
Well, I think we're almost there. To close the gravel roads, you've got three bridges and two miles, you're not gonna be able to replace everything.
Just playing devil's advocate, I own property between those bridges and I pay just the same amount of property tax as a person who lives on a paved road. So why in the world would I not receive some sort of service?
It's like I, it's like I tell people, I've been asking me for years to pave a particular road. I say, when you bought that piece of property, you knew it was on a rough road.
They still have the same right to access.
Well, you can't expect to pave every road in the county. It just ain't gonna happen.
Well, the, the bridge deal, yes, you're gonna have to go by usage. I don't know if we can replace every bridge and every gravel road for the next twenty-five years.
Some, some cities and towns have gone to a program where if you gotta, if your street needs to be fixed or replaced, the people on that block.
Yeah, and Minnesota, the local property.
Younger Association.
The whole, the whole town doesn't pay for the people on that. I know out here, out here on, uh, south of town.
My grandpa lives on Brookridge. It's that way. There's associations.
Associations. That's why they, they, sometimes they don't pay when we're do, do, do work because they, you gotta, it's gonna cost each one like ten, ten grand to have it done. But that's what.
That's a little different, though.
You're gonna have to look at things like IT. Do you want a really good IT vision or can you do with less? You're gonna have to look at how many people are piled up behind each one of the windows out here. Can you stand to have one less person in each place? It's not gonna be good decisions, but
They're not.
You're gonna have to look at it. You're gonna, you're gonna have to look at all that. Can't just do it all to the road department, though. And everybody says road work is underpaid and
well, it's like, hey, don't take it out on me. Take it out on Roger. He's the problem. It's always the other guy. Don't do, don't do anything to me. Do it to the other guy. I work harder than you do, Roger, so you should pay me time.
But I can say our budget is accelerated faster than our ability to tax. So there is a problem. Like, you see it there.
But there's, there's a lot of departments that are, have been very consistent even through COVID.
Right. But I'm gonna say that but, I was looking, insurance has got higher prices.
But it's just about it. Didn't, just about every department, twelve, about ten, twelve, ten, twelve, fourteen, exactly.
Nope.
No, not really.
Nope, not at all.
Some of them have gone.
Besides looking at numbers, I'm like, oh, they were about.
Smaller numbers still say it all.
Nope, some of them have actually been lower.
You look at that spreadsheet in the packet, it kinda shows.
I use treasurer's office as an example. That's not really a small office, but general basic dollars in twenty-one is five hundred fifty thousand. Twenty-two, five forty-eight. Twenty-three, five fifty-seven.
They haven't.
It's, I mean, it's within ten thousand dollars of three years ago.
Well, again, I, I, I don't know how many bridges that office builds, but I just talked about cost per square foot of bridge for construction. And if you're alluding to the road department is spending too much money, again, um, the construction, asphalt for roads, I just gave you dollars for that. Equipment, equipment isn't the same as what it was two, three years ago. I just heard that a John Deere tractor is one point off, they're asking one point three million dollars just to purchase it. John Deere just had a tractor come out.
You have the biggest, most awesome.
You're, this man back there, what'd he say? His expenses went up forty percent?
Yeah.
For the cost of his.
The last five years or something.
Probably is, we can't.
And the wages they're paying went up fifty percent.
We can't, we can't match that.
No. People then will leave the county and
Yeah, you put everyone out of business.
But I, I mean, if, if, if your challenge, then Kyle, is to reduce the road department to two thousand eighteen, is that what, is that what you're saying? You wanna get pre-COVID two thousand nineteen with the road department? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Well, in twenty-one, expenses were just shy of eight and a half million. Twenty-two, nine and a half million. Twenty-three, just shy of fifteen. I know that's, that's part of it. But that's big dollar changes.
Well, if you wanna, I'll go back to eight million, if that's what you want. I mean, but the board's gonna have to support it, any decision that's made. We won't be able to construct very many, we won't be able to resurface many roads. I mean, we got a federally funded road this year that we are gonna, that's been programmed. It's been part of the, the STIP. Um, we gotta have a match for it that's far in the market. But you aren't gonna have much local construction. You're not gonna have much repair on equipment. You're not gonna have any purchasing. It's believe it or not, I think I, I've said this before, the operators, the people, the county employees, that's your most important investment. The road department, if we didn't have an operator that worked out of the Sway City shop, there wouldn't be any work done. If it wasn't for an operator, the work would not get done. That's an employee. If he doesn't have an equipment, piece of equipment to run, the work isn't gonna get done. And again, go back to the area seven expenditures for the miles of roads that Cassup County has, there's only one county that spends less per mile.
Well, I think we've reached this up enough for today.
Well, I would like the board to approve the construction program or budget and program as presented. Reducing the rural levy so that two hundred thousand dollars is taken from rural basic. Two hundred thousand dollars is reduced from rural basic transfer. And reducing seven eleven with a hundred thousand dollars, that's expenditures in the roadway, and a hundred thousand dollars in traffic marking. So that I can, I can submit this to the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Okay, is there any discussion here? Otherwise, in, in regards to the budget changes, otherwise the two that are outlined here is total of two hundred thousand dollars that we talked about before lunch. Okay, a motion. Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? I just want everyone to remember that we've got things that'll need to be addressed next year. So, and hopefully we can address stuff in the current budget and next year's budget and soften the blow.
Watch everything a lot closer this fiscal year.
This year and next.
Hopefully the fund balances will be bigger coming in next year, that'd be something that's, you know, gee, you all, you can't answer how big it's gonna be. Well, she figures that fund balances are larger than, than expected.
Yep.
And I send you fund balances every month, so.
Well, roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yeah.
Black Jerk?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Sucker?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have some construction.
All right.
Forgot all about that stuff.
I think we do.
Oh, don't worry, I haven't forgot about that. That's, uh, two items not checked off yet here. All right. You ready for, um, construction right away, Doug?
Yes, we've had requests from the state Cooperative Telephone. Uh, they would like to put a communications cable in, uh, three hundred thirtieth street, right to the west of Twenty Avenue or Iowa fifteen. Uh, there is a communication, uh, wireless communication tower being constructed on George Beer Stid's. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
That's gonna be underground?
Yes, everything is plowed. And we are, we do need to do some grading on that road. We're hoping that this, uh, this summer, we'll be able to do some grading. They'll, we're gonna work with the company to make sure that they place that in a place that it's not gonna interfere with our grading.
It is in the road bed, but.
Yes.
Will they be finding that tile that goes through there?
I can, that's, uh, more of the DOT, uh, permission. I will make sure that Doug.
More of the blacktops.
Through, through Twentieth Avenue.
That's Highway fifteen, the state of Iowa would be granting the construction permit on that. And, but I will talk with Doug Crouch and make sure that, uh, they are aware of where that, where that tile is. We should be able to locate that, help to locate that.
Okay.
We can just talk, see where it goes and.
Kind of close, yeah. Okay, I, okay, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Jack waved his hand first.
Oh.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right.
Uh, another situation, we don't know, uh, the status of everything, but, uh, Tony Albert, it's our understanding, he's buying eighty acres from Rodney Burl. And he is requesting to put a, a tile to hook in. A few years ago, there was quite a drainage project that went up in there to Jay's, I know Jay's speed on the corner, um, to hook into that. Uh, so if they would provide all the necessary paperwork, uh, application, um, and they would have everything ready, would any board members have, uh, issues with, uh, the engineer's office granting a verbal permit to them?
What section is that?
Two fifty, that's section nineteen, eighteen and nineteen, the lots creep.
Is that towards the county line here?
Yeah, it's very close.
So it's, it's all the same district?
Yes, it is all the same drainage district.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with that.
That's all that I have for construction and road right away.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Doug.
For discussion, I had some notes. The mayor men's are planning on pouring a bridge deck, that's Monday, done by George Gunthers. Graves has constructed all the south substructure and the bridge on, right south of Titanka. Let me get my notes here quick. We're still looking for two mechanics. We got a safety meeting April nineteenth. I gotta review my budget right now and what we got for next year, but if things will work, we will, um, possibly get some quotes out for, request for quotes for some equipment. From zoning administrator, I did get invited to Floyd County, I think I told the board that last week. And then financial assurance is placed on hold until, for transfer station for landfill, until we get our audit report and the annual meeting for the, the Cassup Waste Management Association is tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
All right, anything else, Doug?
That's all that I have.
Okay, um, on your new equipment you were talking about there, uh, is that above what is currently obligated from the financial statement you gave us? Like the request for quote would be new on top of that?
Yeah, we obligated means we, uh, obligated to pay for that expense where the request for quotes we sent at the beginning, your request for quotes, it becomes obligated when we would order the equipment.
Okay. Just looking at that, we've got one point six million that's unencumbered right now, but we'll be over in the two million. Close to two million with the stuff that's spent and obligated. We'll just need to watch all that.
The new trucks and boxes, they're all being delivered?
No, we have four yet that, that I need.
So you'll have a couple of trucks to get rid of?
Hopefully.
Okay, anything further from the board here?
My brain did.
Is there any discretion, decision, landowner, road crossing?
Yeah. He was in this morning and we just basically said, forget it, we're not gonna press him to do anything. It was so crowded in here, I don't.
So we're accepting that work for the road department?
Yeah, I wasn't bonded, but did the work, so we, you know, we don't have nothing to fall back on. Snuck through the, snuck through the, we shouldn't have people digging through the road to. But make sure, we gotta make sure that question is asked by.
That may, yeah, that may need to be part of our permit going forward.
Make sure that's part of the quote in it for every contractor that's gonna do work, it's gotta be on the sheet, like, are you bonded? If he's not, then he doesn't get to do the work. Contract if it's bonded, we could have went back on him.
Well, we don't have, it's landowners that actually fill out the application.
Well, that still has to be on, the landowner needs to play it out to get that contract if bonded, or he, or his name, the work ain't gonna get done.
Do you want the road department to go out and construct it the way it should be?
It's just more expense, a lot of things that.
Well, if there are failures in their joints, what the whole intention was to get concrete pipe and tie that underneath the road bed so that in the future, we don't see problems, we don't have maintenance. Now we have some sort of joint between some material and concrete that's tied. I would, I can only assume that there is the opportunity for, since this was never put in at the beginning, I think there's more opportunity than not to.
Well, that's, we're about to contact, go and have, call them, the contractor that did the work and see if he'll go back and fix it.
Well, we had our agreement with the landowner.
His cousin did it.
Nephew.
Nephew, so we should have him get ahold and see if he'll get that guy back in.
But if you guys have already told Mr. Metzger that it, that he doesn't have to do anything.
Yeah.
Different.
Well, my original point was that we shouldn't have people like that digging through the road.
But if you don't force that.
Needs, needs to be changed going.
Because if we'd had a legitimate contractor, he would have put the pipes incorrectly instead of the, or.
Yeah. Well, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Jack, Carter, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Stand up.
Two twenty-six, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Hour and a half later last week.
Next week, can I try to keep it to the morning?
What's that?
Next week, can I try to keep it to the morning?
That's fine with me.
How about nine o'clock?